Hello everyone. Evening. So it's been 6 o'clock more or less. We'll start the meeting on the Planning Board. So I'm calling the meeting order. I'd like to have a moment of silence for Russ Wheatley. You know, Russ was a good man. He came before this board for many years. He was a land surveyor in the town of Abington. And he did a lot of work with us over the years. He died a couple of months ago. I apologize for not having this moment last month. But we just, you know, all right, it's just for a moment. Just have a moment for Russ. All right, thank you. Thanks, everyone. Do we have any formates tonight? All right. Well, I gotta go by the agenda, but being 6:05, let's do the site plan review for 49 Lincoln Boulevard at Seonis. David, did you have a letter for that?
Uh, yeah. The only thing that Liz asked me to do is to determine what level of review Planning Board would have to do on the site plan. There was some discussion early on that who's going to have to be a major site plan with notification of butters. So I reviewed as on by law and I determined that it did not need to be a major site plan review because it did not exceed any of the thresholds. That section of by law unrequited notification to a butters. So my recommendation was that just straight site plan review would be required, particularly dealing with any proposed stormwater management that was going to be proposed as part of the project. And I think you probably want to hear from Mr. Garvey, who's here to go over the project in more detail.
All right, Mr. Garvey.
A question on this, Bruce. So I read Dave's response to this and he cited this section and did not feel that it required to do. Some of the language in that section talks about public hearings and notification to a butters. So it was unclear to me whether this represented a public hearing that required notification to a butters or if that happened.
No. The notification of butters is required when you exceed one of those four thresholds. And straight forward site plan doesn't require notification. There are four thresholds. And at one time, when I started with Liz, she thought that the project is in a residential zoning district, which would have tripped that threshold. But the project, when I looked at it, and then Carl also determined that this project is not located in a residential district, you know, that's it. And I don't believe Liz notifies a but, notifies a butters for straightforward site plan review.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Now, Garvey, representing 49 Lincoln Boulevard LLC, Dave Seon and Luc Seon trustees, who are here tonight. I think basically you're all familiar with the area. It's right across the street, just about. The property contains 1.39 acres and at one time contained a bank. Well, it still contains the building that was formerly used as a bank. Later on, was used as an office, an attorney's office, as well as a UPS supply type of store, mailing store and so forth. The property was bought six years ago by 49 Lincoln Boulevard LLC. And it's also boarded by seven other acres owned by Gardens Realty Trust. That is Seon Landscaping has a couple of butters on Washington Street, Harris, Stanley. But other than that, it's boarded by seven acres of Gardens Realty Trust, Seon Landscaping. The site, actually, the site in the past few years, this has actually been part of the existing Seon Landscaping area. This past winter, there was a huge outcrop of ledge in the front portion of this lot. Dave went to the building inspector and met on site to determine if removal of that ledge and flattening out this area would require any type of a permit at that time. The building inspectors met on site and said, no, as long as he was not doing any blasting. So all of the ledges that was in this big outcrop in this particular area, it was broken up by excavators and hammers. There was no blasting done on site. Later on, the building inspector did ask for a plan that would just show the boulder retaining wall that was put along the east of the property line. The site was lowered approximately four to five feet and that material was used within the making of this boulder wall on the side. And a lot, and some of it was taken off site and crushed. Some 18 inches of stone bed was put in. This particular area here was flattened out and which is going to be used for, as the sites presently are, its agricultural landscaping materials. There's a lot of pallets of pavers and stones for making walls. Seon Landscaping does a lot of wall work for pools and patios and so forth. So that stuff has basically always been maintained on this site. So the area probably approximated less than around 9,000 square feet was altered altogether. The site was flattened out. Any runoff on this particular site, 18 inches of crushed stone was put in this area here. And any runoff is actually reduced as a berm with plantings along this side. The runoff mainly goes to, onto property of Seon. Stone lessens that runoff and also lessens the runoff, so runoff to Lincoln Boulevard that eliminates any runoff that previously went to Harris and Stanley. But a lot of it, because it was impervious, is now pervious material in this particular area here. It's used for the storage of plants. Trucks, future trucks will come in here and unload here rather than out here on Bedford Street. They deliver trees, not that there's, they're in there every day, but probably once a month or so, Dave.
Yeah, we got some in the spring.
Yeah, more in the spring when they have to stock up for plantings. And I'm not 100% sure really why we are here. We're proposing a fence, a security fence along the edge of the plantings across the front. Dave's also, the only other proposal is for a decorative wall along the front, which would be stone and some steel fence to kind of improve the situation. Not too long ago, the board may know that there was a, this area was altered. They put a bike path in, not Seon, but the town, and some grass islands in here. So it's pretty straightforward of what Dave, yeah. Dave does on the property some pictures in here of what it looked like a year, two years ago, what it looks like now in the aerial. Storage of plants, some vehicles, some fencing. Look.
Kyle, the first one behind us, I asked you.
Yeah, this is also a recent aerial that kind of matches the drawing here of this area that was done. This was the area that was really altered with the ledge. Which if you look at the town of Abington, Sula Plan, you'll notice that that pile is up five feet higher than the first floor of the basement.
Mr. Chairman, I was gonna ask a question.
Well, let's let Carl finish his presentation.
Yeah. And yeah, and we did, like I said, the building inspector did one, a plan showing the retaining wall and also the proposed one for out front. But those were really basically the only changes. And right now, there's a temporary fence, an existing security fence, but we're putting a black chain link fence on the top of the filler.
David, we have your letter here. Anything further to add to what Carl said?
As I said, I was just anxious to do that section to determine. But in my letter, I did suggest a Godson analysis of whether or not any stormwater controls were needed. I guess the big question is, at this point, is it going to be paved? I hear that it's not. When I went by, there was really no planned material. There was some fire escape and stuff, but there are a number of trucks. Are those going to be staying in that as a permanent parking lot?
Typically, on the weekends, as we get busy, the trucks will line up at night. There might be four or five now. And then on the weekend, you park the trucks in because the activity in the garden center is so busy.
So that was my concern in terms of oil spills, gasoline spills with open, open rock surface. If they were to pave it, they could put in some stormwater mitigation. But if it's going to be primarily landscape product, I think what they have in terms of surface there would mitigate anything that was landscape product. And from what I see in the pictures, it looks like they have addressed some of the runoff with, I guess it's the fifth picture, sixth, along the top of the boulder wall.
Yeah, there's an earth, earth berm along the top of this with plantings. I think that's what.
About 18 inches.
Yeah, 18 inches.
But the other concern was on runoff was the portion of this being directed onto the butters. According to your plan, it looks like there's a, there's a high spot here straddling the lot line at 136 where the water is being directed onto Ronsky. And then the 136 to 135 is being directed towards the other two butters here. But if, because your plan doesn't really detail it because of all of that.
Yeah, it's, it's really flowing in this direction. Actually, yeah, I mean, it, this, this grade here matches the existing paving that was been there for years for the bank. But basically, the high point is here. It all slopes in this direction. There's a berm here. Previous to this, the ledge all sloped down to the Harris and Stanley's property. So we've eliminated anything going to the butter.
Well, was it, you said there was a hole there that was filled?
A hole that was filled?
It was a slope.
It was a slope, yeah. I mean, it sloped down. It was.
That picture shows it coming.
Because the topo doesn't show it going towards the back.
Well, yeah. Well, I don't know if I, I have a swatch.
Right, the topo in the plan shows it.
Well, it's, yeah, I mean, it's, it's going like 136, 135, and it really continues dropping down this hill here.
136, 135.
Yeah, well, yeah, but the high, well, it's, there's actually a high point really, and it's kind of going to the 135. Everything is, really drops down here. Yeah, I think the high point was right opposite the back. There may have been a small 136. There was, there's some real 135, nine, 136, one, 136, two shots in that. But it's basically really reduced. This, this area in here was up around elevation 141. It's down to 135.
So turn it over to the board for your questions. What comments?
David, do you agree that this work involves less than 20,000 square feet, considering it's a 1.37 acre site? And this is about a third of the site?
I have not calculated that. I think Carl mentioned it.
It's, yeah, I, I scaled it just before I came. It's less than, less than 20,000.
What's, what's the dimensions of that work area?
Of the work area?
Yeah.
Well, it's one.
It's two properties.
It's, it's 200 by around 90. I mean, that's if you take it from the street property line all the way to the back.
Yeah, but you're adjusting the front property line by the street too, right? Landscaping.
Oh, yeah.
So I mean, that's part of the work.
Yeah, it's around 18,000 square feet.
Does that include the area on the other piece of property over the property line? Was that, was that altered?
No, no.
So up north.
He's always, no, he's always used that property.
But you didn't put down crushed stone on that northern part of the parcel as well? And landscaping and trees and walls?
Oh, that was, yeah, that was done, yeah, that was done at the same time as this, but he always used that spot.
That picture depicts it right there.
Yeah.
That was 20, 20 and 21.
Yeah, I mean, this area is, I mean, this has always been the road, the road coming up. It's always been used for, for that area, I state this property line. So he could use it, oh, probably eight or 10 years ago.
So we also have, because you asked why we're even here. So section 8-1 says, "Any change of use shall be initiated after submitting a site plan to the planning board." So this wasn't, this looks like it's a change of use. That front part of it.
Well, it is. It was a business building and now it's being taken over as a landscaping surprise.
So I mean, that's another reason why I think we're here.
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's, it's, it's basically, you know, the building, as I said, it's an agricultural use. Technically, I mean, the bank building is there. We're not using it as a bank, but it was always a business.
So when you had the conversation with the building inspector about the, that first one, when was that?
November, I had a conversation with him.
About the moving the, moving the ledge?
So I, I talked to Jim Banda and we met. And my question initially was, what, procedurally, what do I have to do to level out the land? And I said, you know, I know the rocks really hard. We've tried before and it's really tough to break. So if explosives are going to be used, we're going to need permits. How do I go about that? He said, well, your drilling contractor would be able to do that, do surveys, do this and that, and check out the houses around it. He said, as long as you're not going to use explosives or hammers, if you want to level out that property, you have the right to create an O.
And use basically a big jackhammer on it?
Yeah, we used a big excavator with a 14,000 pound hammer and it broke every rock. Which when we built our other warehouse, Glenn dug the foundation for that, we got the same company in, but at the time, they only had like 10,000 pound hammers and it just made dust. I mean, the rock in Abington is, anytime there's pink or blue in it, it's the hottest granite there is. So we were lucky. We actually didn't have to do, use any explosives.
And when was the second conversation with the building inspector that you mentioned? Is that January, February?
So the first one was right around Thanksgiving. Then he came back out to inspect my sign. We put a new sign on the, on the building. No, there wasn't a third one other than recently when I got, when I got the letter, the first letter saying.
You remember that guy Harris, right?
That we had to do a plan review. I'm sorry, yeah. And then Jason Harris came out on May 8th. So Jason came out and walked the land and we stood there and he said, everything looks great here. He said, you know, if they, if they need to get a permit for the wall, have your engineer get it looked at and get it approved. Other than that, I'm all good with it.
Because that's certainly not the story that I got from the building department. That they felt you had not done it, you were supposed to come get permits. You had not been before the building department to get any sort of permits for the work. That otherwise you've been told to come in the first time, that they basically gave you a citation for doing the work, that they weren't how happy with it. That's my understanding. That's what I was told.
Well, I talked to Jim Friday and I had asked him if I can, when I, for the meeting tonight, can I discuss what we talked about? He said, absolutely. In other words, absolutely, I gave you permission to do it.
Because I've talked to two people in the building department. Both of them said that, no, you did not do the right work, that that's why you're here coming for us tonight. Because you were supposed to come either to the building department or to us before the work started.
I was never told that. No.
No, you were told that afterwards, you did the work, but then you were told you shouldn't have been doing the work, that you're supposed to come and do a site plan before. And that's why we're here. It's that you're now retroactively getting it.
Well, the site plan, they wanted a site plan review after the work was done. But before the work was done, I asked permission for it and that's why I moved forward.
That's, that's not the story that I got, but we can certainly check to find out what the issue is.
I'd like to, you know.
They specifically said that was not what happened.
Because Friday, I talked to Jim and I said, Jim, if, what I need, that, you know, can I use that conversation we had? He said, absolutely. I gave you permission to, to level out the land. I would have, if he had said, no, you're going to get a permit in November, I would have filed for a permit. I mean, there's nothing I do out there that I won't, that I, you know. Write down to the signs we have out front, the banners we put up. And we try to, all we try to do is, you know, do it right. I mean, it would have, wouldn't have been anything to get a permit. Everything else we've done on the property, we've graded. Every year, we try to do one little project to make it better. Looking to just expand the business and hire more people and make the town prettier. Learn for the law also.
I have no problem wanting to expand the business, just I'm very concerned how this was done. I feel like this is very much to just do it and then ask for forgiveness later.
Well, that'd be the case if I never asked Jim. If that's not the case.
Then we'll, we'll find out.
Yeah. And again, I'm not putting words in Jim's mouth because I asked him Friday. I was here in the afternoon and he said, absolutely, David, I did tell you, you could do it.
Can you tell me how much distance is between the, I guess, the retaining wall and the property line? I just can't, can't tell.
Well, Kyle could tell you better, but he's, so I left a buffer of trees. Mr. Harris is right there. That's Highway Commercial, those two lots there, actually the three are. And Mr. Harris, actually, when I went out there, he said, why don't you just take all the trees to your property? I said, I'd really like to leave a buffer. So Kyle could probably tell you from the edge of the wall to the property line is a 20 feet.
From the bottom of the wall to the property line is probably around 15 feet.
Because we do have a 25 foot buffers in the apartment.
Probably 10. Look, Carl, look at the, the dimensions there with, with the lot line jogs here. 15, 47.
Yeah.
And then there's, looks like, what's the 511?
That's to the, to the, it's just two different bearings to that abutters property. I mean, it's 15 plus five, so it's like 20, over 20 feet from that corner to there.
15 miles.
Yeah, yeah.
It's 20 feet for a buffer. So does, is that 20 feet from the, I guess, from the property line to the, to the trees up top?
20 feet to the trees up top? Oh, yeah.
It was intensely ill.
It does say double rodent have horns.
Also, while you stayed, wait, in front of the block wall, other wall of the street, is that, that whole area being filled in, correct? So that's all, that green area is going to be leveled off?
Um, it's still got a slope. Top of the wall is.
Well, let's go from two feet to seven feet from when you're standing on the sidewalk. What's that?
Well, the first question, is the fence is set back 20 feet from the property line. The proposed fence, which is on the front side of trees.
And then, what is that, like a five or 10 foot beyond that? Where the trees are setting, what is that?
And the trees are in the center of this, it's around a six foot area of mulch and trees.
That green strip, is that?
Those are existing trees.
Those are existing trees?
Top of the wall is elevation 132 out front, you were asking? This, this wall?
Yeah, the walls.
It's coming, I mean, you can see the, it's this, it blends in with this 132 contour.
Right.
And it's 132, so that would.
It holds it all the way across. So, but the land behind it, you're filling it up. Or is that, am I reading that right? 130? Okay, so top of the wall, why don't we just, it doesn't look the same.
The top of the wall will be 132 and this is, so it'll blend in with the 135.
Oh, yeah, so this will come in. So by the time you get down here, when you're standing on the sidewalk, it's seven feet above your head. Then there's a fence on top of it. The top of the wall is 132 and it's 125 out in front of it.
Yeah, around what? Yeah, the 126 hits that corner of the wall.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so basically, you're standing there. It's taller than your head. It's like the one down by the scalpel. VFW? I figure what that is.
Legion.
Legion, yeah. So that, that, that goes, stays up, so behind you, actually, because right now, it's, it starts up high and it slopes down to the street.
Yeah, we're taking that slope off and ramping it into the parking lot. I mean, this is the detail of that wall with a fence, a fence on top of it.
Yeah, I'm glad actually you included this picture because I only had one concern. I know one of the overall concerns everybody has with, with people that have earth moving machines as part of their living is to do whatever you want. I mean, it's all the place that this water gets filled in. No one's, you know, it just happens, whether someone needs to do it in purpose or not. But, so that's one thing that's hard to contain. We have other examples where that seems like it's a magic game where it's all pronged and we all show up and everything's perfect. I don't know. But I, as an overall, I'm not in a butter, but I've always had a good, I've always had a good feeling about Seon's because they, I'm just going to mention that as a, as a good neighbor. I like that they keep everything clean and they've kept it up. When I came around to this without seeing this wall, the only thing I saw was that, wow, you've got a wall that's going to stand for the next 200 years out there and if it looks like, if it looks like these, this detail is going to look like crap. You know, even that wall they're building down, we're in a team in front of it. It's not going to think it's. Precast concrete that you see, like even the ones we have there, but the mulch piles, those are just blocks that. Yes. Have like a mold on. These are actually a structural engineered wall that. No, this looks good and that really should. Can the camera see that? If my guys weren't getting old enough, we would have used all the stone, the stone. And the purpose of that wall is decorative? No. It's to, no, it's to retain. To retain. Right now, the sidewalk has quite a bit of slope. So we basically want to come in off of there and just landscape that level, make it level so it's not washing up into the street. And Kyle, I think maybe on the height of that wall too, what we typically do is sometimes where the fence detail goes into the wall. We actually build that bumper up 18 inches or a foot so the finished mulch height would actually be below the wall. As a curb. As a curb stop, the safety.
The fence is less, less built that are around the top of the ground.
The actual grade would be below that wall, finished wall height.
I brought it, I was more, I had torches burning everywhere on it until I saw this picture.
Now, we just use that in the site in Duckberry. It looks pretty.
No, it does.
In fact, if you go by the handle of the wall where they're building all those apartments, I took some photos. They've used it over there. It doesn't require any concrete footing, requires crushed stone, gets back with stone and then fill with stone. Structurally, it's, it's not a big cost savings. It's a lot of labor savings. Typically, we build a stone wall, but.
Yeah, no.
The way labor is right now.
What's the fence like? Chain link, black chain link fence.
No, I do like an aluminum ornamental fence. I wouldn't want to do chain link out there. If I'm going to do a wall, we'd probably propose an ornamental aluminum fence, just for decorative. The security, it's not going to be the security, it'll just be the. Trying to do is, we're just trying to make that front look needed. Right now, it just rolls down with outcrop. You can't plant it, you can't really do anything with it. So when I was, when I was told to do the, the plan, the site review, Liz had said, is there's anything else you think you're going to do, propose it? I'm not saying we're gonna do it right away, I just wanna have it...
Well, you're, you're kind of...
It's kinda hard to hide anything you're doing, because you're... Yeah. I honestly, I, I would never have started that if I didn't talk to Jim, I would never, uh, initially gone out there and started doing that.
Find out, what's what?
Yeah, that's a question.
I don't want, on that extent, it's because we're not gonna do full drainage, I think of that, it'd be setbacks, of course the neighbors would be alerted, because nobody's here, I think, has any, any neighbors. Um, because that's what I would like, have site plan review for, is to get the neighbors' input.
My, uh, that we are selecting, during this public comment, I guess.
Can I ask a question? I know, um, we have fourteen or sixteen abutters that we've been on the local square, but because this wasn't a major, did those go out, I guess is my question?
Oh, I, of course, I don't know.
Did, did the, um, because we, we actually brought in the envelopes and everything, and forgot the stamps, we came back and stamped them. I might, I guess my question is, did, did any of the neighbors that over, like, on this? That's all.
You couldn't answer it, Liz is there, so...
Yeah. I don't think, I don't think they were sent out.
You're the only one that kinda has it.
I think that's why she asked me to determine if it needed...
Okay, makes sense, it was expensive to mail it.
So that's under the zoning bylaw, that if it exceeds a certain, because initially, she said this, this is a major, could be a major project.
Well, in a change, oh, yeah, I don't know. Uh, I, I've encountered situations where I'm doing something where I'm not changing anything, I'm really just kinda reorientating, and I've been able to, uh, do a, um, submit it without having to go through the drainage, it's very flat, but leaving everything else, it did go through a full site plan, other than, the most important issue we have here is always setbacks and drainage, sure, um, and driveways. I, I can kinda see the falling in the gray area, where, yeah, it's a change of use, but you really didn't do much with the drainage. If you were, if you were gonna change the whole front of this thing, tear down the building, or not tear down the building, but, you know, maybe turn this into a convenience store or something, I think that would, because then you'd trigger this into parking.
Sure.
Like just adding supply space.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, if the picture on the side looks nice of the, the rock wall they did.
And we, we, as of right now, I mean, I'd love to, if I could wave a magic wand, turn that building into something nice, a marketplace, and connect it to the warehouse, and I have ideas, I'm not saying any, but obviously that would all come before the planning board.
I told my wife, I thought that was the speech they looked for the fire department there.
And we had, when I had Montelio's over, we had the sign on the window, I had people coming in, so.
Uh, Montelio's.
I put some failures out for it, as far as trying to, we're trying to make the business a twelve-month business.
Yeah.
And some of the higher-end garden centers offer coffee, ice cream, baked goods, can have little vignettes with Italian food cheeses, again, just kinda dreaming up ideas. So eventually, if we did that, obviously we have to come back, and we would set up a, that would be a, a, a plan that we could do. For right now, we need space, we had the winter to do it, we only have a couple of months, two to three months of our off-season, and that was the plan, was to get, to get that area usable. Um, you can see we was, we were using it ear, uh, before, and you can kinda see the elkroppings, where we were just kinda working around all the boulders, and it just became, um, and that's what, that's what, um, initially led me to talk to the building inspector, how proceed, how do I move forward procedurally on...
One of the things you're, I don't think, I don't know if it's gonna be a problem, but one of the things you're falling behind, there's a, um, lawsuit actually in the town, uh, one neighbor did whatever he wanted to do, pushed right up to the guy's fence and just, you know, and then the other guy, what are you doing? And it's just a nightmare, because he shouldn't have done what he did, or it's like, what are we gonna do, make him dig it up and move it or whatever? Um, but you're, unfortunately, someone's come beforehand and messed that all up as far as, uh, no, we're gonna make sure that the setbacks are done, and the, and we follow, there's gotta be a full site exam or something. Honestly, in my opinion, I don't, you've added a lot, other stuff we typically add to this is already here, you're not adding any lighting. The rock wall and the drainage, and there's no need for increasing parking, and I don't see that. Um, my concern was where, where, when water builds up against the, the stone wall in the front, if there was any, I saw a drain down there, I show those drains all the time too, but where do they drain? I always love, they showed a little drain around the footing, but there's no place for it to go. Um, but if it, but if you don't think there's any hydrostatic pressure building up there because the water's drifting off the other direction, if that's just rain and water, but, but the main flow is flowing to the back of the property?
I'm not sure which of questions.
Well, I'm not too very well... Um, if water's gathering here...
Yes.
There's gonna be like a swimming pool, you know, we're gonna need to let that water out of there. But if the majority of the water is flowing off this, and this is just incidental, whatever hits the ground and can find its way up through the gravel, that's where I was concerned. I thought that if the flow built here, we were gonna have a lot of, a problem.
Well, again, I, Carl will have to provide the information there. From what I see, the height, you're saying the height point is back here near the one thirty-six?
Yes.
So, everything from that point forward is, is hitting that wall?
Maybe it's a board of stone.
So...
Yeah, the, the height point is just past, past the building, I don't, maybe it's, I don't, well, we, we, yeah, you, yeah, right about there, you're right, I'm, yeah, I did.
Okay, so, so this is all heading in this direction?
Yeah, I mean, this is, I mean, it was before, it was ledge, now it's eighteen inches of, of, of crushed stone, so it's not...
So they are reducing the slope, which would reduce the amount of runoff. Um, did you indicate you're talking about leaving, uh, portion of the wall up as a...
Yeah, I'd like to leave a curb stop, yes.
Yeah, as a, kind of as a dam.
Yeah.
So, if there was a concern, I guess what I would suggest is they're leaving that curb, which is going to, uh, impound the runoff, but maybe on the back, back of that wall, you run, um, you know, an eighteen inch wide...
Prescribed pipe.
Oh, no, a strip of stone.
Yeah.
Crushed stone. Uh, so, when it, when it hits that barrier, it's got someplace to go, because it, as Jeff said, even on the, uh, the drain behind the wall, there's no place for that to go.
I think in the detail, uh, when you build a wall, those are hollow, and they're actually infilled with stone, and then the back, on the detail, you'll see, um, usually inch and a half stone gets put back there, about two feet thick all the way down.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what the, the details are sure that, just kinda shows this thing. But, I mean, I know these come up, they have their own, they have their own drainage details, this, this company, I know who uses this before. Uh, they'll trade in.
Yeah, I mean, so, Cituor concrete, uh, actually supplies the verilock system, we're doing one in Cohasset now, right on a sensitive area in the marsh, and they actually engineer it too.
Okay, because the only, only thing you gotta hear is if the water penetrates through, it's gonna bleed through the stones and run down the face, and just discolor the face of the stones. So as long as the wa, water can't get through the stones before it drops out...
Yeah.
That's really, you know, and I don't think the stones are gonna get moved by, by anything.
It's also a pointy end on the backside of that, that's gonna, you know...
So I just put two feet of stone around the top of the wall.
So leave it exposed, you're saying, like a French, like on the top?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you're gonna leave eighteen inches of, um, wall showing, uh, just put in a script, you know, eighteen inches wide...
Yeah.
Four inches deep, something just to make that connection.
Would you wanna see like a sort of stabilization fabric or something to separate the gravel with the stone?
Unless you've got, it, it doesn't look like much of a slope, unless you're gonna build it up and put a building atop of it, or a parking lot, I don't think you'd need that, that, that geomesh. Yeah. I was thinking about, someplace you tie it with a stone wall, just go back with it, but, um, you don't have a mountain coming at you, it's all flat, just a small area.
Yeah, these here, when you, when you get over a certain height, they put sleepers in concrete, so like, the, the, the verilock walls are small, eighty-pound stones, they'll use geogrid, depending how high the wall is, it goes back. With these, you don't use the geogrid, but you use the concrete. So the base footing is a spread footing, six feet, it goes up to three, and then it goes to two as it goes up, so that you can see the base stone there.
Yeah.
And again, I'm saying at six, they might design it, at seven, they might design it at five, the one we're doing now, I think is a six-foot spread footing, so the bottom stone...
Okay.
And then as it comes up vertically, the stones get reduced, so...
Any further more comment?
Yeah, I just wanna, is it, uh, something that you said earlier, I'm not sure I understand, so, I thought what I heard you say is you may or may not do it, it wouldn't necessarily be something that you'd do right away, so...
Yeah.
Is, is this in fact something, and you said, I think I'm gonna throw it on the plan just so it's there?
Well, I'd have to get a permit for it too, because it's a wall, anything over four feet, I'd need, so I'd have to still come in and say, I'd have to pay a permit fee to build the wall. So at this time, I, I was told if we're gonna do anything, put it out on the table now. So quite honestly, we don't have the time to do it right now.
Sure.
And I'm not in any rush to really do it, but I'd say, hey, if we wanna do it this winter, and I have my permit in hand, I don't have to schedule a meeting and wait, you know, two weeks or whatever.
So I guess that becomes part of the question, Bruce, is that, so we've got a site plan, we've got that proposed on the plan, and it may or may not take place.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, given that, well, are we okay with this being on the plan? Um, as something, I guess the question becomes, i- if it's on the plan, then is it the board's expectation that this will, will happen at some point?
Yes.
Yes and, and no, would you say, because if it was part of the drainage system, then I would have to put it immediately, it couldn't be done later. But if it's just a decorative thing, it's really just a decorative fence, they, whether, if they don't put it in, they just, I just kind of, there's a, a builder in town, and he's come in, probably got three or four properties approved, and he's, years ago, he just had it approved, so it'd be ready, so that the guy could work on it, or whatever, he had long dropped out or whatever, but he's, that's happened here before, where they just come and get approval, and just hope maybe to build it and find that, I don't know, something else. But, so it's not uncommon to, for this whole thing to maybe die, or never be done. But if that was part of the drainage, it had to be done now, because that's a problem we've had with, uh, uh, neighborhoods developing. Uh, drainage was supposed to be part of it, but because it got built after the houses were done, it never got done. Um, so we need to have that kinda stuff done up front.
Well, we put conditions of approval.
Conditions, yeah.
You know, as far as, I mean, you know, I'm reading David's letter, and, you know, according to his, we recommend that the stormwater analysis and system design be mitig, uh, to mitigate any impacts be submitted as part of this plan for further permitting. So if we were to go forward with this tonight, certainly that would be part of the motion to approve.
What, what would be part of the motion?
David's, David's recommendation, the stormwater analysis and system design to mitigate any impacts be submitted as part of a plan for further permitting.
Mm-hmm.
Carl, is the, is the topography between the temporary security fence and the top of this wall, was that altered as part of this project, or is that existing, was existing raised?
Are you, were, were you talking where this meets?
Yeah, green area.
Yeah, that's, that's matching, yeah, you can see that these contours came across the pavement.
Right, so this was, this was an altered?
No, no, no.
Okay.
I mean, it was never a beautiful spot there.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't altered.
No.
It's part of the project.
No, and that, yep, it has not been altered, no.
My other concern is, and I brought this up in other projects, uh, I have a hesitation approving anything this evening, when neighbors may not know we're talking about it, and I know letter, if the letters didn't go out, even though they may not be required to, um, I mean, this is permanent, like we couldn't go back and revisit it, if, if neighbors come next week and say, we didn't know, we're talking about this, we had major issues, we think this is a problem. So, um, I'd like to just not take a final vote on it this evening, and just make sure neighbors are aware, and make sure that they don't have any issues as well. I mean, it's not like they're sitting in there waiting to finish it off.
Well, that's, you know, if you were to make a motion to continue this hearing, you know, we could do that.
This has been going on eight months, why wouldn't they have come by now, if they're a problem?
They might not know the process, the procedure, it's after before...
They saw the wall, and then they started sitting there for five months with machinery.
Yeah.
And Dave, you talked to two of them, was it Dr. Three?
Um, Harris, so...
One, two, three? Do you have the trails that's still on?
I, I did not talk to the owner of the tent, was it rental house, uh, is it, what's that name there, Ronsky?
Ronsky, yeah.
So I talked to, I don't believe he was the owner. And the gentleman in the middle, um, I went to his house, nobody was home, I think he was, Mr. Harris doesn't work that much, and me and him have a great relationship, so... I guess, if, um, if under the zoning bylaw, if it's not a major project, I guess that's why, why I'm asking, then the letters did or did not go out, obviously they didn't go out.
Sounds like they did not.
Yeah. So, but if you don't have a major project, do neighbors have to be notified? I guess that's the question.
That is the question that has to get to the top of this discussion.
Okay, because when we did some other work years back, it was, we could, and I'm gonna maybe mess this up a little bit, there's a twenty-foot buffer, and you can even put a fence, because I put a string line there for the neighbors, and they came out, and I said, or I can plant trees. And so we put trees, and I think the bylaw said you can put, I'm just gonna make this up, a six to seven, or seven to eight foot tree every twenty feet. Well, if you look at every twenty feet, like it's one here and one there, so I put these five feet on center, so it's just a continuous hedge, you know? I guess I, my question is, procedurally, if, if, I, do we need to notify neighbors on a project like this, if it's not considered major?
David, what, David, what's been your experience as far as major, you know, project requiring letters versus something like this, which has been turned out? In Abington? Yes. Um, really don't have any experience, it's really Liz, she could tell you.
Okay. And honestly, to add to your point, we get, Liz sends us all out emails when someone starts complaining, all the time. So, I did, I did pay for a major, a major review, which I was willing to do that, in addition to the fourteen letters stamp. So, like you said, they probably didn't go out, maybe they did, I don't know. I can't speak for all neighbors, I can speak for only Mr. Harris, because quite a few times we were out there talking, and like I said early, he says, you own up to this old wall, you cut all the trees, and I said, well, I really, I wanna keep a buffer, um, as it, you know, as it gets further up, there were no trees to keep anyhow, so, that's why instantly, right before we even finished the project, we put the trees in, and then we did the final grade, and I think what's, what's, I think, my opinion is, somebody drove by and saw us with a big roller, and we got, I got that thing like a pool table, all permeable[1647.83] and then we did the final grade. And I think what's, what's, I think, my opinion is, somebody drove by and saw us with a big roller, and we got, I got that thing like a pool table, all permeable material, and it looked like we were just ready to pave, which we weren't, I had no desire to pave it, I had no reason to pave it. Um, and I, I think, maybe because we prepared it to look like that, maybe it initiated something to say, hey, wait a minute, timeout. That's.
I guess my.
That was from Liz a little bit, you know?
I guess my comment on abutters is, I recognize, this is the list, or this is the radius of the abutters. And really, the only abutters that would have a significant, um, or any comment are gonna be the ones that supposedly talked to, across Lincoln Boulevard, I don't see.
Yep, right, yeah.
Why anybody.
Right.
It's, it's really those ones that he shows on the.
They just duplexes and they're rentals?
So I'm not, it's not required, but I can tell you, from everything else that we do in this town, the number one complaint from residents is, they don't feel like they know what's going on.
But it's not required?
It's not required, I'm not asking you to do anything. All I'm saying is, I'm gonna go knock on the doors, just to make sure, and then everyone's happy, we can all go home.
I actually, I really did, I wanted to be the neighbor.
I trust.
We're so exposed there, all we wanna do is do the right thing, you know?
So, like I said, just because we don't have them here, we don't know if the letters went out, and the number one complaint that we keep hearing is people don't know what's going on, and don't know where to go, how to do, find out the news about things. I have a very big hesitation with just saying, alright, it's good, let's go, move forward. That's my one concern about approving this tonight.
As far as these abutters right here goes, I mean, for the last four months, they obviously see the wall, they obviously see the plantings. Uh, Mr. Harris, I've known all my life, went to high school with him. Um, I, it's easy for me to survey to a job, he doesn't care if I go in his yard, and he said the same thing to me as he said to Dave, you know, you own right over there, I don't think the clarity there, so.
Part of that wall was existing in twenty, when we, when we, when we did that little clearing there, we took the boulders that we could pick up without breaking them, and we made it, part of that stone wall down below along Mr. Harris's is kind of where we determined it was gonna start. And obviously then we did the extensive work this year. So that's been there a couple of years, since two thousand twenty. That was, that picture is April two thousand twenty-one. Um, and obviously the other photo is this April twenty-two.
I, with what you're saying, I'm just wondering, in this case, do you have a contingency of some sort that would blow it up?
But. Here's, here's one of the other reasons, it's that this isn't like a half-built project where you have, you know, studs hanging out, that you're able to use it today, you are using it today from the photos it looks like. You don't have a cease and desist out there. It's not, it's not gonna change anything by saying, let's wait until the next meeting to give it a final approval. All we're saying is, let's just not finalize this review until we just double check and make sure the neighbors don't have an issue with it, because it's gonna be there for the next hundred years.
Rick, how would the, not gonna send out letters, how do we, do we assume that the neighbors are watching this tonight? And they'll.
That's one option, and literally, I will go knock on the door, just to make sure. I've done it before, and I'll do it again, just to make sure. I'm sorry, what?
Do you need plans? I can give you additional plans if you wanna give them to the neighbors.
Sure.
I don't wanna be a wise guy, but this two forty-five foot trail is sitting a foot away from our property. Make sure you're knocking that door, find out what he thinks.
The, the.
They're legal, they have a permit.
Oh, trust me, I'm well aware of those two.
We did everything we could to make it aesthetic, which is, and feasible for the neighbors to see and look at and make it safe.
I am well support equitable enforcement of the laws.
Okay, and we do it every day.
You have a couple of letters of comment, uh, from Marion Wong, Ryan. Hi Liz, reviewed, we have no comments, we'll await, uh, comments, guidelines from the planning board. And we heard from John Stone, uh, ZVA Building Inspector, fellow sewer commissioners. Abbott Sewer Department has reviewed your request for information regarding the planning board hearing, scheduled for July eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, and has the following comments. Forty-nine Lincoln Boulevard, this proposal located on Assessors Plan thirty-nine lot seventy-six must be approved by or sewer commissioner of a regular public hearing.
Just to clarify, I asked Marion about her letter. She said she was not weighing in on this document. Like, with the five hundred Chestnut, she had thoughts on it. She said she was not weighing in on this, just, she's waiting for us to decide what the next step was before she has anything.
So what's the board's pleasure?
There was also the conversation between, uh, some discussion of runoff and, and things that could be done here in terms of crushed stone, that I think you understood what Dave was talking about, and asking, is that something that we would wanna see reflected on the plan? If it isn't here already? Continue.
Yes.
Yeah, if you're gonna continue the hearing, we might as well show it.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if we're gonna continue.
Yeah, it was just kind of a conversation, but it's not here.
Just make sure that you address the, you know, the issue that Dave addressed in his letter, and realize. Carl and I can chat outside the meeting, and enjoy some of those concerns of the board and some of the others. Alright, uh, would someone like to make a motion on this?
I'd make a motion to continue, uh, site plan review to our next meeting.
This will be September.
We showing proposed black fencing along this area and through here, is, would we be allowed to do that now? Dave would like to.
Well, I'm more concerned about safety.
Yeah.
On the back. The, the temp barrier I put up front is actually a, they, they weren't actually dug into the ground, they're on pads. And, um, but the, but we're proposing a six-foot-high black chain, chain link, uh.
Which runs.
Fence which should go behind, on the backside of the, uh, abutis that are there now, which would prevent, God forbid, a kid or anybody to fall off there. You could actually, you know, someone could climb the boulders and get hurt, or they could fall off and get hurt. I just don't wanna.
I don't have a problem with, but I don't know if there's any legal issue with that. I don't have a problem with that, but I don't think there's any legal issue with that.
Do they need a signed site plan in order to apply for the permit for that?
For the fence?
Because that's what we ran into with, um.
I think so.
It's not a way, you know. I mean, I can make the fence, and we have almost less than five.
I think they need to have a site plan approved.
Everything we have is six.
Before they can do anything like that.
We wouldn't go any higher. No, I'd go six. Yeah.
So it would be at the base of the?
On the top, on the top elevation, where you see the crushed stone with the trees on.
Okay, so there's, there's the trees.
But it's gonna be, it's gonna be behind the trees, the only one that sees the fence on the, the abutters, you won't see it in this stone area.
So it'd be effectively on the edge of the buffer?
Correct, on the outside, yeah.
Yeah.
Really save those poles, because that fence is just gonna lean over.
Alright, motion's been made to continue this hearing till our September meeting. Does someone second that?
I'll second.
Alright, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. So just as clarification, you're not asking Liz to send out the abutters notices, you're going to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I don't, I guess I wouldn't wanna preclude that. So if Liz has the letters that you gave her, and they're all stamped and ready to go, and we came to the conclusion that maybe we might as well mail them.
Sure.
Then I wouldn't tell her not to. So, we'll figure that out.
Alright, gentlemen, thank you.
Very good.
As far as the fence then, we're just waiting till I do this.
Oh, that fence?
The front fence, I was, the temporary fence, if I go to do the wall, which I'm ninety percent gonna do, when you ask me, I just don't wanna say yes and then not do it right away. We're gonna, we're gonna need to move that fence that's there, that fence in the picture. So I intentionally put that temporary barrier up now, it's a six-foot fence, so we can work on that slope, because when you get in there with heavy equipment, you need one to move.
My only comment would be, if they think it's a safety issue, the board ought to consider letting the fence in behind the. I don't think it would not materially affect the site plan, if it's going behind the abutis or whatever the plant materials are, and if it's a, they, if they feel it's a safety issue, the board might wanna authorize that. Or at least ask the building inspector whether that intended permit is needed for fence. Any thoughts from the board on this, as far as the fence?
Just, just, still, I mean, these are the stones, and these are the abutis, the fence is going on this side.
I can't, I can't imagine a situation where we're going to tell them to take down the fence or the abutis or the rock wall or anything. I think it's just making sure the rest of that flat spot is fine. So I'm perfectly fine making a recommendation to the building department that, you know, if there's a safety concern, that this could, could move forward, that positive.
Okay.
Up front, you know, the original was more for security, because you come right off the street, and we've had problems across the street, there's a, there was a, there's a hole there with kids in there, and they, they come in and they break lights off the trucks, the plows and this and that, anyhow. I put the temporary up there, knowing that if we do the wall, we can move it, and I also needed it as a temporary measure now for security. The other fence isn't necessarily security, because people don't steal trees and shrubs, because they're too lazy, and then they're gonna have to try to climb up. What I'm afraid of is, is if a little kid gets running and runs through the abutis, he could potentially fall off the edge. And even if I called the contractor, that already gave me a quote on it, they're probably two or three months out.
Well, typically, building inspector wants, wants them to know that the fence is on your property, so you have to survey, which you just did.
I don't think we're pulling a permit for it if we have to. Honestly, in our background here, we've, there's a company in the center of the town there that never showed any fences, just one day they built a thing, they fenced it, hey, what the hell's the fence, guys? Oh, we use fence for security. And all that does is collect trash and take off the neighbors. But so it better be no up front.
Well, I wanna use black too, because black disappears. So like, between the black and the green, it's, it's not gonna be a big silver galvanized fence, it's gonna be black, so. Everything on the property we have now is all black fencing.
I think what you're getting from the board is, go ahead and apply to the buildings.
But do you want to just take a vote for whatever it might be worth?
Alright, let's do that, someone make a motion?
So make a motion to, uh, basically send a letter to the building department saying that the planning board approves the, would support the installation of a fence along that line for safety purposes while we continue the site plan review.
Okay, second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So procedurally, just go to the building inspector. I feel better, only, I mean, it's just a, he intentionally, you know, when I was first notified about the plan review, he said, Dave, whatever you do, don't, don't put the fence in now until you, you come in front of the board. And I said, well, the panel's on the front, I said, I'm not gonna penetrate the ground, I just, they're on pads, and I just need to get a temporary barrier up there. And we did it, lays a level, so it doesn't look like one of these sites where you just see a safety fence. I mean, it looks, it almost looks like a permit. I wanna get, I just wanna get it cleaned up and landscaped.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
They've always stayed. It being six fifteen, and then the site plan will be five hundred Chestnut.
These, this is all around, just a whole bunch of? For us to hold on to?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Good seeing you.
Good morning. Take care, Carl.
Thank you.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
I brought that usually from the other room. I brought this in from the other room.
How did AC go?
You know? I found an override switch, and I loaded it, and it's not doing anything. You pressed a lot of buttons. Pulled my truck into the lot, and we just let it run. You all set?
Yes.
Sorry, uh, good evening, Sean Riley, five hundred Washington Street, I'm here representing Mr. Peter Fiore, who is, company owns the property at five hundred Chestnut Street in Abington. Also Kevin Grady from Grady Consulting is here tonight. The purpose of tonight's meeting was to request, um, a vote to approve a revision to the previously approved site plan. Uh, if you recall, the site plan was approved in two thousand eighteen by the planning board, zoning board, conservation commission. Um, and several months ago, we came back here with a proposal, uh, some, an idea to take the two buildings that were up here in the northern side and combine them into one building. Just for marketing, for expected interest, and to make just a slightly better site. So we got some initial feedback and a preliminary basis from the planning board. Grady Consulting went to work and finalized this plan, which they submitted to you into know-it-engineering. Um, essentially, as I mentioned, the only changes are up in this corner, the northeastern corner. For the most part, it's, it's the two buildings combining into one. We're able to also utilize and build a dedicated driveway across the property, which previous to that, um, went through a parking area, and I think Kevin, uh, passed out, oh, you have. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'll give these guys data so they can compare. So he's giving you the before and after, the original layout plan, and then what's proposed, so it's easier for you to pick it up. So, that's what we have for approval to, for the amendment to the site plan before we start any construction changes on the site. And I don't know if you wanna check with Dave first before Kevin goes, but Kevin can give you more of a summary after Dave mentions what know-it-engineering has to say.
I'll go with Dave. I'd defer to Kevin to talk about, to highlight the changes.
Thank you. And the, um, that's attorney Riley actually, uh, I think described most of the changes pretty well. It is a minor modification. The, the main point of the modification is to combine these two buildings that were approved here. We've combined them basically in the same area. The previous building coverage is a hundred and fifty-two thousand square feet, where we're proposing a hundred and eighty-eight thousand square feet. Uh, with this configuration, site coverage, uh, was proposed at forty-one point nine. This proposal's at forty-two point six, so very close to the same coverage that we had before. Again, combining this building into one, um, changing the roadway network. It allows for one dedicated, uh, access road to access this building and this building. Uh, previously, what you'd need to do is go through this parking lot this way or across this parking lot here, so there's no pedestrian, uh, interference there. We think this is better circulation. We also changed the grades a bit to lower the building, um, reducing the hill that was here, uh, several feet. The, so, again, everything is, uh, modified in this area here. What we needed to change as far as technical items is the pipe networks basically around these buildings, uh, for stormwater, sewer, electric, et cetera. This drainage basin here, um, you can see we had a turnaround here that we eliminated, and we had a drainage basin in this location, so we just needed to modify the, the shape of that a bit, uh, volume-wise, et cetera, it's essentially the same.
And that's the basin design that's reflected in the plan?
Correct, correct. Uh, we ran, we reran all the drainage and gave Dave a nice big book of numbers to look at, but a lot of that is duplicate of what was done before. And then, again, changing this pond a bit and some of the networking on how to get there, but the overall, uh, result is that we didn't increase the rate of runoff, it's essentially the same as what we had before, we're just replumbing it. And I think that's it, did I, anything?
Can I just add that, um, we're still working within the same limited work. We're not filling any extra wetlands that we weren't already previously approved. Um, but we would, um, go back to the conservation commission upon this board's approval of the amended site plan. We'll then make an appointment with the conservation to show it to them, so that they can approve it also, so that everyone's on the same page, and that way, at the end of the project, when the ASGIL is submitted, both the conservation and planning board refer to the same updated revised site plan.
So there's no additional impacts to wetlands, it's just so they have the latest.
Correct. There was a lot of expansion within the one hundred foot buffer zone, that we should run by them, but the limited work did not change.
Still comply with parking, we still have the same amount of lot coverage within a one percent. Um, if you're gonna vote, we already have a special permit to exceed the thirty percent threshold in the bylaw. Sorry, Mr. Johnson.
No, it's okay. Um, we haven't had an opportunity to look at the, the technical aspects of the drainage system, but, uh, from what they're proposing, I would say that it's a better configuration in terms of circulation. The only question I have is, is this new building, um, contracted building, is it the same number of units? Or is, or is this building going to be, um, a unit that's twice as deep?
Is, so the, these two buildings, and the, the difference between this proposed new building and the two prior buildings is, is an additional thirty-six thousand square feet. You're, to ask, who's moving in here, we just don't know yet.
No, the reason I'm asking is, under the existing plan, you have, um, an access aisle going between the buildings with two, two banks of parking.
Yes.
Under the proposed, you have one bank.
Right, and we still comply with our parking regulations. We had, the previous plan had excessive parking. All of the parking spaces that are delineated are all shown only on the front side of the. All of the parking spaces that are delineated are all shown only on the front side of the building and we use that to count our parking. We have parking available on the rear side of every building, but we didn't count those, just for clarity. We also didn't count any parking in the building. Some of these buildings we anticipate will have garage bays. So those would be additional parking spaces. So what Dave's pointing at is there were 60 spaces right here previously. There's now 30. And he marked it up. There's 18 spaces here, 16 there, 22 there, 13 there, 17 there. So for example, if this is a warehouse and if it's one, well, it doesn't matter. If we split it in half, right? One 100,000 square foot warehouse requires 25 parking spaces. Now you also need some spaces for the, the office. So even if you threw in a 2,000 square foot office, that requires five parking spaces. Well, here's your 30 parking spaces right there. These other buildings have probably two to three times more parking than they need based on the zoning calculations. If you recall, there's no retail use up here. This is all low impact, low traffic, you know, warehouse style, manufacturing style type of thing. So we don't anticipate a lot of parking issues up here, but we have ample parking. Yeah, way, way more than we need already. And just, I'm sorry, one other point. In our, our very first edition of the plan, we had, most of the buildings had gravel in the back, which is storage. And the planning board asked us to pave the areas in the back. So, and we're actually required that all vehicle parking be on the paved areas so that any drains could catch any sort of gasoline spill or anything like that happen. So that obviously, we, we could line these as another 30 parking spaces, but not knowing if there'll be a garage bay here or there, just not showing it because it's a, depends who the tenant's going to be.
So the gravel spaces are continuing, correct?
The gravel, there's storage areas. Those are storage areas, but we paved directly behind the buildings where the vehicles would be for parking or accessing.
So there's a large chance that some of these gravel areas aren't going to be used.
Yeah, it depends on the tenant. Like what we were envisioning, or Mr. Fiori's envisioning, you know, if it's a plumber or plumbing supply business, so they might store some of the stuff in the building. They might have PDC pipe out in the yard out back. Employees will be parking on the paved parking areas. Different types of businesses that could have outdoor storage. Some of them will use the building only and not, like you said, Rick, have no outdoor storage. But it's designed for the flexibility.
Yeah, you put trailers out, you know, trailer storage.
Yeah.
Fire did or did not review the circulation?
It's been submitted through the planning board to the fire department. We haven't heard any negative, one of the sheets that's in the master set does have the fire department's radius.
I mean, it looks like it flows better, but I'm not a professional firefighter, so.
Yeah. Or a truck driver.
Or a truck driver.
We did, yeah, we do show.
My Sonata will fit around this wonderfully.
It also dresses it up because now that we have a dedicated travel driveway, we have a tree lawn driveway now.
See, the light green areas, is that going to be grass? Is it going to be trees, brush?
Grass.
Light greens generally grass, so a drainage, the dark greens, the trees, the woods.
So really, this is going to be one of the better looking versions of these in the area, it looks like.
Yeah, 60% of the site is, is green.
I'm just saying, I've been to a couple others and I'm like, this is just awful.
Yeah, it's a concrete jungle or paved jungle.
So we're showing the ladder truck that we've used previously, being able to get around the entire site. We didn't run multiple iterations, but this maneuver is obviously easier.
Oh, they'd still go around the back of that building?
They'd still go around the back, yeah.
They wouldn't necessarily go around the front of it?
Correct. It could go either way.
Okay.
Could you jog that?
It's a pretty good hill too, so.
Good luck. If you recall, the security at the driveway, the gates close at night, only tenants can get access. It's also camera monitored. It will be, it's not yet.
Is the purpose behind combining the two buildings logistics in terms of how the, it is built? Or is it more business considerations?
Kind of both.
Okay.
I think, you talked to some marketing people.
There's, they seem to think that there's a demand for bigger buildings.
Bigger buildings.
Being so close to Boston, everything else is being built further south.
Okay.
And then before, there was all loading docks that were, as you drove up the hill, that's all you saw was the back of loading docks and trucks. And aesthetically, I wasn't really happy about that. So now this is going to be the front of the building and we put trees in front of the whole thing. So aesthetically, I think this is going to look a lot nicer. That whole parking lot there.
This was.
Was going to be all loading docks.
And now you get the face of the building here from most of the accessway.
And you're not asking for an increase in the traffic cap as of now, correct?
No. No, as we mentioned before, this property is set back off the road. We don't own the strip of land along Chestnut Street. We just basically own the driveway here. We actually have an easement for the driveway area. So, you know, when those trees, well, the trees are there, there are evergreens and wetlands in here. Part of this is obviously not going to attract a business that's looking for a visible site for pass by traffic like you'd have on Route 18. This is for someone who just needs space and who needs security. Because there's only one way in and out, as I just mentioned, it's going to be a secured entry. So we're still very early in the tenant selection stage because we can't really engage any tenants until we can get foundation permits. And there's been a long delay in construction because of COVID and things like that. So we're eager to kind of get moving. It gave us, however, the flip side was gave us the opportunity to kind of take a second look and try to improve it.
Do you have a tenant for that first building when you first entered?
The first building's out and it's fully occupied. We have an electrician, HVAC guy, and restaurant. They do refrigeration we do.
Perfect. That's what you wanted, yeah.
Any other comments from the board?
The basin five is, can you show me again?
Basin number five?
Yeah, I think that's the one that you said would be. And then there was an electric transformer.
Yeah, just in, just in front of it.
The location of that move as a result of this?
I think we moved, yes, so we moved the transformer from another location to this location right here.
Yeah, the transformer was across the street. It was just a little tight over there, so we pushed the retention pump back a little bit.
Yeah.
Those transformers take up. Maybe give you, this is a coffee table.
So my recommendation was if the, if the changes to the layout are acceptable to the board, I would suggest that you approve the changes to the layout subject to us confirming that the stormwater works equal to or better than previously approved. And I can coordinate that with, I'll, I'll let Liz know when that's complete. And unless there's any issues with the stormwater, they should, they would be able to move forward once I notify Liz. I want to get these questions on the record from Marion Wong Ryan. And she says, hi Liz, these are questions for this amended site plan proposed. Question, is there a narrative with this amended application to fall along easier and better understand the applicant's thought processes? Please advise. Question two, reviewed and it appears that none of the submitted plans shown in dated June 8th, 2022 modification, combine building three and four, show the combination of buildings three and four unless we are missing it. So feel, please feel free to advise which page we should be reviewing, please advise. And the third question was reviewed and disturbing to see building one still listed as quote unquote prop contracted building one, number one, 180 by 60 as the structure has been built and final sign off was on 112, 28, 21. The certificate of occupancy is your 1230, 21. I just think if the applicant is going to be open, is going to open the site plan for this project and just touched upon it with the date of June 8th, 2022, shouldn't the most updated information be included? Any comments?
Okay. I, this is the first time I've heard those. Marion did not send those to me. So we'll take the last one for us. I think what she's saying is one of the buildings says proposed buildings, when it's actually now in construction. She's saying that shame on us, we should have said existing building. We apologize. Doesn't change anything. It's still the site plan, same site plan. The second, first and second questions, I, I don't know why she can't follow that, you know, what buildings are being combined. She didn't reach out to us. Maybe she talked to Liz Shea in the planning board department.
Maybe I could help with that. So this legend says dated June 8th, 2022 modification, combine buildings three and four, right? And so you kind of go to the plan and there's building three and there's building four.
Oh, I see.
Like we're combining these, but but that makes it clear what was previously three and four is what's being. So that could be where the confusion was coming from?
Got it. Yeah, I'll, I'll give her a copy tomorrow. I'm in her office every other day. I don't know why she didn't ask her. Certainly easy to answer. So I think those are just some points from hers, but nothing that would cause a revision to the site plan as proposed.
Well, we heard from David your comments and also David, will eventually we will get a written letter from you on this project?
Yeah.
So you basically say that you would approve this with, you know.
Yeah, if the board approves of the layout, I'm suggesting that the layout isn't improved and or what was previously approved in terms of circulation. That if, if those changes are acceptable to the board, I would recommend that they approve the modification subject to our confirmation that the stormwater works as intended. And that once we determine that, I will notify Liz that it's acceptable and then they can continue on their way in terms of permitting. If there are our issues, it would come back to the board for resolution.
I'm sorry, we appreciate that because as, as we understand, you don't meet in August. So we'd be coming back in September just to read his letter. This instead, once his letter is issued, assuming it is positive, we could then proceed with the conservation.
Well, I talked to Liz and that was, you know, that was the process that she recommended.
Wonderful. Thanks.
Do you need to go to the water department for an adjustment since this is expanding the square footage?
Depends on the user.
Okay. All right. I would make that motion, but just with the addendum, also the fire department has a problem with the traffic flow, which I don't think they will, but just.
Confirmation, the fire department does not have any.
Correct.
That looks like it's improved as well, particularly on the right side of the building.
It looks much improved. But I just, just for some weird reason, if they say no.
Right, yeah. We have no issue with that.
So I'll make that motion.
Motion made seconded. Seconded. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
Can you see the office?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, can you see the office?
No, I wouldn't be changing. I didn't want to be disrespectful to you, so.
That was very short.
I always keep you on the edge.
Stormwater is still same.
Stormwater same. You should add, we don't believe this too.
Yeah, it's always good to leave one for her.
She'll leave it when you leave.
Leave with Bruce Hill, give him to Liz.
I will. Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right, release of surety on 1145 Bedford Street.
I have an issue. And I'll show you what the issue is. I should have made copies of this. Here's what was proposed. Here's what was built.
Interesting.
Okay. My concern is that we have language very specific in our bylaws that site plan involves confirming that the architecture is general New England style architecture that fits into the area. This does. I would argue this does not.
It fits on Route 1.
Yeah. So again, this I say generally fits because you have, I think, a general, Jeff, you can, you're much better with our ticket, it's much better than I would. But even the roof line, you're supposed to have a kind of a, what do you call that, roof line?
It looks like the architect issued that and the contractor did that. That's usually what happens.
So there's supposed to be two separate kind of signage up top. There's supposed to be kind of a roof line. I'm not so worried about that the, the garage doors aren't as high as they're supposed to be. I don't think, I, to me, this is a substantial change in the elevations. And it's too late to do anything about it. But this clearly should not be allowed to happen in the future. I just, I don't think this is, like I said, this meets the general standards. I don't think this does. I don't think this is a minor alteration. So I don't think there's anything we can do about it now. But going forward, I don't want the building department saying that, no, this is fine, when clearly it's not what was proposed. And we've had this too many times lately. We had that guy in Center Street come over, said he was going to build a house next, you ever Christian build a house in Center Street? Everyone in this board said, do not build a split level range.
And what did he do?
And he built a split level range. So, and there's been a couple other issues too, where just things get changed. I mean, we're still having to come back and see that our friends from 999 Adams Street, they changed their site plan all around. They never came back to finish there. They were good. But anyway, I'm not going to hold it up because I don't think there's anything we can do. We can't make them rebuild the whole front of the building. But and I, and, and generally what he's done for the town has been really good and I really liked it. But for this.
So where is the check and balance supposed to be, Rick? How does that, how do you?
You know what? That's what I don't know. I, I mean, I, I assume this was sent to the billing department at some point.
That's about the only thing you can do is make a condition of approval, let it be built in accordance, like you do with the site plan, built in accordance with a site plan. Where you can put built in accordance with the architectural plans submitted with the application dated such and such.
Yeah, the lights are on too. Can't have those.
Oh, we, we're going to make a fix that immediately. I'll have no problem saying no to that. I understand you can't make a fix in time for front architecture of the building. But I certainly think we should address the light situation. To me, just someone wasn't looking at the plans. And again, the, the developer usually, I very much like what he does. He does really good work. This, just, I don't know what happened.
Can't be dramatic too.
Okay. Sean, would you like to say something?
Steve Dawson.
Like, he built it?
Yeah. So.
Would someone like to make the motion to release a surety on 1145 Bedford?
I'll make the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's see, let's do, request to release the remaining surety held on Century District Estates. Please vote release through 73122. And David made, made the motion, he put a letter saying, we feel for you to release on this. Sean, are you connected with this?
I am. Just wanted to witness your vote. The subdivision's completed, the town has accepted the road. Everything's done. So this is just the release of the remaining $25,000 bond. And I believe the town accountant asked the vote be to release the bond in all interest as, or through July 31st, because it's easier on the books if you did it at the end of the month instead of trying to calculate the interest of a percentage of.
So seeing that all required work on this thing has been done, someone like to make a motion to release the.
Quick question.
Yes.
So we sent over email correspondence pertinent to this. And then there was the email that she sent back to Dave, request for release. And it included PS, we do not have any money left for this.
Overdue.
What is, what is that? What does that say?
That was if you needed to hire know-it-engineer to review any sort of final plan. That's what I responded to. There is no other plan. Everything is done. So we don't need any more engineering money.
Okay.
And I believe Dave later followed up and said he had no objection to the release of the bond.
No, his response was okay to release, but there was nothing in between those from you clarified. Okay.
Nothing to, nothing to review. Other than I don't think, if he wasn't getting paid, he wouldn't have been doing it right. All right, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Um, let's see. Discussion on development of an economic development plan. Anybody want to talk about that?
No, that wasn't mine. Bruce, is that yours?
I think we're going to keep this as a monthly item, in case we hear anything on this at all. Liz isn't here tonight, but can pass on this tonight.
I would like to take advantage of the fact that we have Mr. Riley here. So at one time we had an Avenue Business Council.
Yeah, A B C.
And it seemed to me, I was, I came across it someplace and I was looking at it and it looks like it is since dissolved. But it would seem as though the intent of that or the objective of that was similar to what we're talking about here in terms of economic development. So just maybe briefly some history of that, with kind of what, what happened there and.
That was a number of years ago, you're right. I think the selectmen had suggested putting together the Avenue Business Council. And so they had asked me to get involved with it, so I sent out some letters to restaurant owners, business owners, anyone we could kind of create in the list. And we had, you know, two or three meetings, we meet up at the Alhouse, discuss it. And at the time, there was a couple of hot button issues, like some zoning, proposed zoning changes that were, I don't even remember if they were positive or negative to businesses, so it generated some interest. Signage, signage, is that what it was? And, but it kind of waned, I mean, obviously, these business people, it's hard to say, can you take an hour or two, you know, away from your business, because we're asking like the owner to leave his business. So that made it difficult. And, you know, some of them would say, well, I already have the chamber of commerce, I go to those meetings. Kind of more of a county or area scale than just Abington. That being said, coincidentally, I'm going to a meeting tomorrow here at Town Hall where the town is going to make some decisions about where to spend some ARPA money, some of the federal investment money. And one of the things to discuss might be some sort of beautification enhancement to the downtown areas in the Abington Center and North Abington Center.
That's a master plan.
Yeah, and I think that's what we kind of want to talk about, about what little things can be done immediately, what things can be invested in for, you know, all the next two, three years or whatever. This is our first meeting tomorrow, so I don't know what the parameters are, but you know, Abington is unique where it has two town centers in the little, in the centers. And at the same time, we have national businesses here in Abington on literally the town lines. If you look at Walmart and Yellow Freight and Target. So we have the convenience of the large stores, but we still have the small business. And there's going to be changes, you know, Bemis Drug is closed, what's going there. Some of the, some of the long time business owners in North Abington Center and Abington Center are getting older. They're going to sell or they're going to retire, what's going to happen. So there will be changes, some of it may be physical, some of it will just be new faces. And I think it would be nice if the town, the planning board, the selectmen, I know Liz is doing a lot of work looking for grant money, can kind of try to get ahead of it. And, you know, years ago, we put in the new lights, you know, the ornamental lights was a nice improvement. We have banners up and down the streets, but maybe there's more that can be done with this money to perhaps maybe even upgrade some of the facades of the buildings or the sidewalks or put in some more street trees. So that might be an impetus to have a meeting with some business owners and maybe we can kind of make that kind of a routine thing. Even if it's a quarterly or semi-annual meeting, it could be helpful because attracting small business and keeping small business in Abington is in everyone's best interest.
It's an element of the master plan, too.
Great.
And also the Old Colony Planning Council, through the district local technical assistance, D L T A, I mean, I was involved with that because we use D L T A money through U S Economic Development Administration money to support that. And like you say, Sean, there was interest in it, but there was hot button issues at the time, the zoning, the signage and stuff like that. And of course, one of the strongest supporters of this was the owner of the Bemis Drug Store and stuff like that, too. But, you know, as far as I know, A B C never dissolved, it just sort of went away. So conceivably, it could be, you know, revived under ARPA money or whatever.
A B C, meaning the Avenue Business Council, yeah, or call it what you want. And it's not limited to just North Abington Center and Abington Center, but we also want to look at what's arisen for Route 18 or Route 123.
Summer Street.
Summer Street, right, I mean. Biggest problem with Waller is you need someone to lead it unless you're running a committee, right, which you kind of are, so. You know, there's good people in this town, there's some smart business people that we might be able to tap into. And, you know, I think, I'm interested to see what comes out of this federal money. It's a, it's a rare opportunity for the town. We have over a million dollars to try to decide. And I think some of the targets are specifically those things that aren't normally on the capital budget for the town meeting or things that we might otherwise have to borrow money for. So we're trying to see like one of those things that, you know, we'd love to do if we had extra money. Well, now we have an opportunity where we have some extra money for specific issues. And I'm very interested to see what some of the suggestions are. It's a, it's a meeting of some of the department heads, a member of the selectmen, town manager, town accountant, D P W, a few others, so.
That's tomorrow's meeting?
It's tomorrow. I'll let you know where and when after the cameras off.
The utilities are not buried in North Abington Center, right?
Correct. So all of the ornamental lights look great, there's still telephone poles and wires there.
Really bad.
Yeah, and it's very expensive to bury.
Abington Center, too.
And if anybody brings up any more clocks, put in this town, just like, no, they're out of there.
Did, did the, was there ever actually a, somebody who went to look at the cost of burying the utilities?
I, I don't know. Well, I'm sure it was discussed. The, the time it was, our previous D P W director was at Cannon Canal, so it wasn't John Stone. But I do know that when we built the high school, the new high school, middle school, we looked into burying the, the wiring that runs down, let it its way to Route 18. In that case, just getting under Route 18 made it, it was like a $600,000 project to get rid of, you know, 10 telephone poles. And we just felt we couldn't justify that, although aesthetically, it would have looked tremendous. We felt that the taxpayer.
Yeah, and the reason I ask, Sean, is just because that again is something that's in the master plan, that notion of burying the utilities in the downtown centers. And something that should be researched. And something that I've been going back and forth with Liz on is just trying to run a spreadsheet of all of the goals. And then an area for what we're, what we have done or tried to do in response to each goal.
It might be on that ARPA wish list, I don't know, I haven't seen it yet.
So, so, I mean, this, this falls into the broad category of what I don't know, how many conversations have happened in how many different places that somehow would tie back to what the plan was, what some of the planned objectives were. And we could note in our spreadsheet to say, yeah, we did look into that.
Right.
And for the following reasons, it just wasn't feasible.
I would love to see it happen. Because a lot of those buildings, as we all know, especially in North Abington Center, are very old buildings. They've been there for more than a century. Some have burned down, I mean, the Bemis, across from the Bemis Drug Store, that vacant lot on the corner of Bright Ave was a four story, three story building, it was huge. Back in the day, we had very large buildings there. Those buildings that you drive by, Martin's Bakery and Dave Misby's Barbershop and all those, a lot of people don't realize, they go back a pretty good distance and they have apartments in them. There are already mixed use uses there. I would expect we'll see more of that in the future, but I, I'm very curious to see what can be renovated and what needs to be replaced. Not this year, but it's, you know, change is always coming. And I think it's always good if the town and the planning would get ahead of it and even, not kind of guided, but can also assist it. You know, like to Rick's point, let's see what the architecture is going to be. Let's try to be, have sort of a uniform, you know, look to the town and not have five different styles of architecture all standing next to each other. Well, that's the thing I noticed as an architect coming into this town. I don't see the architectural style. I just see kind of, it was a random land that kind of built up and it didn't, except for some of the areas downtown that you could see there was a focus on it. But yeah, I'd like to see, I don't know, some, some kind of defining. Yeah, and back in the day, I mean, when some of those buildings burned, they either didn't replace them, I mean, there's a gap next to, I was kind of called the Sheilin Restaurant. Wow, the restaurant on the corner of Railroad. There's a gap, you know, there's, that used to be a building that burned down a long time ago and never was rebuilt. The old movie theater has now been converted to apartment, so they, you know, saved that building. Some buildings, like one of the buildings around the corner from my law office, they had a fire many years ago and they just knocked off the third story. You know, and kept the first and second story. It's just, back in the day, things were done because they didn't have the ability to make certain types of renovations that we can nowadays. But in reality, a lot of those buildings will, because of their age, are probably going to have to be replaced at some time, or maybe two or three at a time, but let's hope that it's a coordinated effort.
Yeah, architecturally, the nice buildings are the ones that burned down.
Honestly, you know. It did, it was ridiculous back in the day, actually, those wires, those wires, that building, those, those, the wiring, the balloon construction.
Construction to wiring.
I don't know if this is the place to broach it, but I mean, the one, I think a lot of those, that entire block on both sides is going to have to just be rebuilt. Much different.
Yeah.
And so then you're going to get into the question of, well, parking, where people are going to park if you rebuild these buildings. Because right now, a lot of the parking is kind of around back, little catches, can, can type situations. I don't know if there's a need to have a conversation about the town buying that parking lot that the church owns. The church bought it after the building burned down and then they turned it to their parking lot, but would that be better off as a town parking lot?
Right, I think we have a 99 year lease, but I don't know what year we're in now.
Yeah.
But you're right, I mean, long term, you know, if you're. It, change is tough, a lot of people don't want to see change, but you know, you can't like Bemis Drug, Drug Store. And so can you find another small business drugstore to move in? No. So what's it going to be? And most likely, someone else is going to go in and say, I like the spot, but I don't like the building. So they're going to start from scratch, so let's hope it works. At the same time, they have to do something that also works with the limited parking they have. You can't park on the street because that's for customers in and out, but every one of those buildings on North Avenue has parking in the rear for their existing tenants. So that will limit you in what you do in the future. How many apartment units can you have? If you have six of them now, you might not be able to have eight later, maybe, but again, it has to be designed. If we're able to find more parking anywhere in that area, it helps the businesses and, you know, businesses would love to see the town invest like that because that feeds the business. And it's a great part of town. There's a lot of history too, a lot of great memories of Olens News and the Fish Market and Bemis Drug. The old library was there.
Two or three.
Yep, you know, so. We'll create new buildings, you know, with new buildings at some point, but construction costs are very high right now, so.
You're not going to have single story buildings down there.
No, and you're probably not going to have two story buildings there.
Three and, three and four.
Yeah, I think you look at three and four, but again, there's where you want to look at the architecture.
Yeah.
You know, and.
I swear to God, if we build what they're like, they're building in South Wayne with on Route 18, I'm moving out of this town.
Right?
I'm not, that's not what I want to see for mixed use in Abington Center or North Abington Center.
And that's where, you know, maybe this business council, we can get, you know, we can get the conversation started with some of those businesses and maybe, hey, you two guys own a building next to each other, this guy's willing to move in, but he'd have to take your buildings down and do something together and it'll be a brand new place, but still have a little small town feel, you know, New England style. I don't know, I mean, I, I don't build for a living. I know a little bit, you know a lot. But there's certainly, hopefully, some opportunities to reinvest in Abington and bring it forward and not just let it kind of, you know, rot away. There's some very proud businesses and longstanding businesses that we'd like to keep there or bring in some new ones to fill the gaps.
Discussion of Ames Knoll Master Plan, Rick Collins.
All right. I don't know if you guys want the long version or short version, prepare to give either one.
Short.
The, the general origin is just that this is a state park that has not had much love shown to it over the past 40 years. And in particular, the last 10 to 15 years. So back in 2018, put together a master plan committee, basically just to start to pull together the needs of the park, start to prioritize them, and then put together a vehicle that could drive the whole thing forward going into the future. So just to flip through this quickly, it is a 600 acre state park. It originally was owned by a bunch of different landowners and then Ames Knoll, who's part of the Ames family, started to basically piece it all together in the 30s and the 40s. And the Dyer Library has an amazing collection, basically of all the letters he sent to all the landowners, saying, hey, I'd like to buy your land. So he started to pull this all together in the 30s and 40s and there's a whole bunch of stories about what happened after that, but long story short, ended up as a state park in the, in the 60s. So on one of the pages, I just have some headlines that I've pulled out showing kind of the back and forth about the status of the park. How at one point, there was, I think I have it in here. There was like 20 seasonal employees up there to help with, give lectures and do events with kids and coordinate things and maintain the trails. And now I think there's one full time person up there in the summertime. So it's just been really decimated in terms of the investment into the park. And the only thing they've really done to fix it up, and I don't blame the Rangers because they really love the park. Just, there's no money in D C R for a lot of the maintenance needs, they replaced the grills by the pond. Because literally it all rested away and there was rotting rusty pipes sticking out Shin High all over the place. So finally, they, with the help of Allison Sullivan, they pulled them all out, put the new ones, they had the new ones, they just didn't put them in. So we've had a couple of cleanups in the sense then, keeping down, cutting down the shoreline, just so it looks nice. The Rangers like it because now they can see all the way across the pond. It's not a safety hazard. People aren't getting lost in the shoulder high weeds. So our key goals are to improve public safety, focus on visitor services, embrace active recreational opportunities, protect environmental benefits and then prepare list of long and short term capital needs. So in terms of public safety, the couple of things that popped out was, again, keeping that damn shoreline cleared. Because a couple of years ago, if you remember, with no maintenance, the growth was getting up over the head. So that you couldn't see what was around the corner, someone could easily hide in there. The Rangers standing on one shore couldn't see to the other shore. So we've cut that down, we've gone through it a couple of times and keeping it down low. Encourages people also to be able to sit and see and enjoy the water because you couldn't see the water at all times in the summertime. The other big thing is to improve the trail marking system. Just too often, people get lost out there because really, especially to get out towards the, the western edge of it, there's no trail markings, it's very zigzag. There's no way to naturally feel like I must be getting close to something. So if you're kind of new to the park, it's really easy to get turned around. So the idea is to start to improve the market, the marking systems. And that way, hopefully, the fire department doesn't have to go out there so much in the summertime. Improved signage for A T V and hunting vans, there's actually, this is starting to happen now. The new summer ranger has ordered signs and with the help of some of our mountain bike friends, they're going around and putting signs up, reminding people you can't use A T Vs in the park. There are some state parks you can do it, you can't do it in this one.
Are they hunting on that site?
Supposedly, if you head down towards more of the Brockton Beaverburg Conservation, there are blinds up in trees. And again, it's just people not being out there, not saying anything, not knowing. So it's, all right, let's put the signs up and say, no, really, just stop hunting it out here. I guess there are parts of like Wampe Tuck you can hunt in, bow and arrow, shotgun, but you can't at Ames Knoll.
You don't want to wander into it and not know.
That too, that too. And of course, the more regular ranger presence. Definitely feel like they underestimate the number of people who use that park on a regular weekend. I mean, it's just constant streaming of people in and out with needs. So better visitor experience, this is stuff like, the bathrooms burned down almost 10 years ago. And they weren't even open for a bunch of years before that. So you've had, you know, a porta potty, maybe two porta potties. It's not a great situation. So how much would it really be to get more permanent bathrooms out? There's, there's a movement in a lot of parks to bring back these facilities that they had closed a lot of them over the years. Now they're kind of like, well, no, this is something that people really need because there's a, there's an impact if you close them. People still going to need to go. So it's a matter of where you want them to. We want to update some digital print maps. There's been, you know, especially. you know, especially when we finally get the Pareki estate, which should be in the work. Uh, other land acquisitions need to complete because right now this town, the state still doesn't own the northern half of the pond. And, uh, there's an issue right now for conservation that one of the private property owners who owns down to Cleveland Pond, took a, a bulldozer out there and started making his own trail. And he stopped and he's going through conservation now, but that's still a privately owned piece of land right next to the state park land that goes all the way to the waterfront. So need to figure out a way to complete that trail all around Cleveland Pond. Because people walk it, but they're not supposed to really because it's private property. So we talked about active recreational opportunities, that there are some state parks, it's more passive, it's walking, it's sitting, it's looking, fishing. Uh, there seems to be a real interest in Ames Knoll for active recreation opportunities. For instance, one of the big supporters, big stewards of the park are the members of the New England Mountain Biking Association. And they've been fantastic in terms of helping rebuild bridges and put up some signs and, uh, clearing dead fall, I mean, they clear dozens and dozens and dozens of dead trees every year, uh, that fall over trails. They love mountain biking in Ames Knoll because of the geographic, uh, excuse me, geological features, it's really rocky, a lot of outcroppings, a lot of neat little areas to go in and around. So really up in that northwest corner of the park, they're, they're there all the time. And, um, they've been amazing stewards of the park in terms of just, if there's an issue, they let us know, like, they were the people who let us know that uh, the homeowner was out there with a bulldozer in the wetlands, clearing trees. So they've been fantastic. But I think at one time was also the home trail for the Abington High Cross Country Team.
Yeah.
Uh, it's a great little run, what can we do to bring back, make it, you know, a trail, because right now they're just running their own memorial field, which
Yeah, they do need to be out there by this last.
Yeah. Well, and that's part of it too, is all right, how do we have it be a way, I mean, a way that, you know, uh, that's not an issue or that's a less of an issue. But, you know, it also gets kind of muddy way up towards the pond, so how can we address that as well? We keep hearing people want to use it more for kayaks and canoes, but if the gates are closed, that means people are really kind of hauling them back and forth. So what can we do to help encourage the use of, uh, car-top boats? Um, and then, you know, there's a lot of trails, what can we do about maybe regular bike races, running races? Just get, the more people get in there for these types of uses, I think overall the better off that the park remains. Some of the environmental needs, we do want to test water quality, obviously the weeds are an issue. But, you know, it's not because, you know, thirty years ago, it was because of septic systems. Well, the town's sewered now, so there's something else that's causing the infiltration, is it just the lack of flow right now? There's no flow in the pond because it's not going over the dam, there's no place for the water to go, which is kind of sitting there. So when that happens, you get a lot more aquatic weed growth. Is the water that's coming into it the problem? You know, we can do some water testing and find out, pursue a way to maintenance plan.
Can I ask, is, is this a kettle pond?
No, it was a marsh.
Oh.
It was a marsh with Beaverbrook hunter running through it, and then when they started damming it, it started to kind of.
Flooded out.
Yeah, flooded out, just like with Island Probe. Uh, beavers are back in Abington, they're in the north end of the pond and they're very visible and you can go see their efforts very clearly. Um, so the question is, uh, should anything be done with them? Because otherwise they'll start flooding out trails and other areas, so that needs to be a conversation. So some of our short-term goals is we want to start to formally mark trails and sub-trails. Uh, we originally were thinking of doing it on the east side of the park because that's pretty easy, but uh, the realization is that, you know, if we can do the west side instead, that's where emergencies happen. So we want to start marking out some of the bigger trails. Uh, the big thing I think really is to create the Friends of Ames Knoll group. They have it on Wampanoag, they have it on Borderland, both of them are really good, strong advocates for those parks. They make a lot of noise, they get a lot of state, federal, a lot of state aid for the parks. Uh, they coordinate events, they keep it clean, they do trail maintenance, they do all these things. Uh, they can raise money and, you know, use that money to go out and make the park better. So this is really going to be the important thing moving forward is having this vehicle to do a lot of this work, or at least to coordinate a lot of this work. Longer-term goals, uh, one of the things to do once obviously we acquire the northern part of the park is to build a formal pathway around Cleveland Pond. Anyone who's taken the western trail knows it just kind of dead ends at a point, there's a sign up that says private property. And now you're a mile and a half out into the woods, you have to turn back, you're supposed to turn back and come around, not everybody does. And one of the other big things is to continue what, excuse me, to study whether it would make sense to have the main entrance off Chestnut Street. Because right now you have thousands of people every month driving down Linwood Street, which is a really narrow road. I'm surprised it was built there originally, but, um, would it make more sense if there were more land? If the main entrance is off Chestnut Street, Linwood can remain a secondary entrance. Once you acquire all that land, you can almost have a road that goes all the way through, it connects. I think it's, it's worth the conversation considering how many people park out on Chestnut Street anyway and use it for bike trails or the quads or whatever they're doing. So those are the main things, of course, we vitalize the picnic and field areas, those have kind of been suffering from a lot of negligence. I don't think we'll ever get back to a point where it's used for Boy Scout overnight trips. But, you know, there's definitely enough space down there that can be used for larger events. There's a couple of nice fields, there's a big pavilion area.
I wish you big families come down.
Yeah. Even, even now, in its current state, it's popular on, on the weekend for events, you go down there, there's always families out there having picnics or renting out the pavilion and having a bigger party. So, I mean, these things are happening, it can just only get better and bigger, really. So the idea is that, um, we're going to have our next meeting, we'll probably approve this, finalize it. We'll present it to our legislative officials, Senator Keenan and Representative Sullivan, uh, send it into D C R, we actually, we also have basically a list of projects that goes along with this, this is just kind of a top-level piece of it. And then, you know, disband this committee and move into a friends group featuring, you know, people from this town, representatives of the mountain bikes, maybe somebody from Brockton because it, it, Brockton really does play a role in this, the Butts Beaverbrook Conservation Lane, which is a big piece of land. You know, and then really try to keep this going. So, is there any questions? Love to answer them.
Sounds great.
No, thank you for your listening.
I gotta say, when I read that, I was, it wasn't a page not worth looking at, it was actually filled with good information.
I thought you think so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you for your time.
And it being around eight o'clock or so, I hear a motion to return.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
One, no.
Were we going to talk, was there a conversation, I guess it's not on the agenda, there was a gentleman that wanted to.
No, it's not on the agenda.
I was going to talk about it. All right.
Thank you everyone for watching.